Okay, all right. It is Monday, May 14th, and the Board of Selectmen is back. We started at 5:30 in executive session. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. We've got Elise Lyons here to talk to us about a grant workshop that she attended on behalf of the town. So we're going to take her first so she can give us her report.
I want you to look at what you want.
Why don't you just kind of tell us about the workshop and how you plan to use what you learned?
Okay. I found the workshop to be outstanding. The gentleman Frank Lane, who was the instructor, was extremely knowledgeable in the field. He's worked for the Department of Defense. He handled their contracts, their grants, just a very brilliant man. And one of the benefits is that you get his email address and you can use him for networking down the road if anything comes across that he can't get answers. But there's also, Grant USA also has a forum that you can go out and use them also as a resource, which I find will probably be invaluable down the road. Because I'm not going to say I'm a professional at this at this point, you know, I'm just smarter than I was before I took the class. But I think it's, there's a lot of big learnings I got out of it to protect the town of Plimpton. One was plagiarism. You know, if you get caught doing any kind of plagiarism, you're going to lose the capability of ever having a grant again, no matter what kind of grant that you want. So it's, I don't know who's kind of writing the grants, but I think I would like to talk to any employees that may be submitting grants and sit down with them and review them together, just so that we can make sure all the ducks in a row before they submit them. I found that to be a really major concern. The other thing is to make sure that you do all your homework and that you only apply for the funds that you truly need. They don't want you to lowball it, they don't want you to highball it. You really got to come into what the needs are. If for any reason something changes, say you get a grant for $5,000, turns out you're only going to spend $4,000 of it, you can contact them, say, listen, we have $1,000 left, we expected to pay, you know, to spend it, but we didn't. And they'll help you figure out where else in the budget line you could transfer the funds to. But you have to go through that process in order to do it. Never ever give back the money. They don't want the money because they gave it to you for a reason, they went through the application process, and they want you to make sure that you use what you're supposed to have. The different types of fundings that are available are almost endless. There's federal, which actually flows down to the state. So you're not really going to apply for a federal grant, you're going to really apply for a state grant, but it's federal funding. And then you have corporate funds also available, and then independent foundations that also offer money. So we'd have to look at, depending what the needs are of the town, to go to whatever organization will best fit our needs, and if they're giving money at the time. There's no set deadlines. Today, someone could say, let's have a grant out there. So it's not like every February you have to have your grants done every March or anything like that. It's look in advance, see what's out there, and then start to get to know the foundations and the state and what kind of money is they're going to be giving. That would be the key. I think I would like, and I gave you my recommendations at the end of my summary, and I think if we could get all the town departments to give you their wish list, and then we sit down, compile that wish list, because some of them could be interrelated, that we could combine them and make them into one grant type thing. So not just say what you need, but say what you would like. And then we can take it from there, prioritize it, and then you'll give me that priority list on where you want me to start looking for funds and start looking to see what we can get for grants. I think that would be the best approach.
That's kind of like the CIP plan.
There's a lot of aspects of grant writing that I also need you input on, that I don't have the answers for. Mostly mine are like what's your gun's number? Is Town of Plimpton a 501(c)? I don't know if it is or not. But big difference on what verbiage you put into the grant, how you present it. You want to have all the pluses of the town, because you have to put yourself above any other town out there looking for that money. And we got to look, we have to say to them, we need this money because we're better off, more need than any other town around. And it's all verbiage. And statistics, data, strategic plans, things like that.
Is there a website or a variety of websites you could go to to see what funding is available?
Yes.
Okay. So they made you aware of that?
Yes. The big thing was the fire department is actually under agricultural. So if you want to have any money for the fire department, that would be US Agriculture, which I thought was interesting.
That is interesting.
Because they've had so many forest fires, and throughout, you know, California, all parts of the country, the federal government decided to migrate all of the funding to the agricultural for fire department.
That's really interesting. You'd think it would be under emergency management, but, hmm, okay.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. But those are little things. But again, I don't want to just randomly go up there and look to see what grants are out. Unless you want a list, I mean, I can give you some suggestions, but they're ever-changing also. So I think it's more, you give me a list of what we need, and then we start attacking it that way. Because you can also contact foundations and say, they might not have a grant exactly for what they're looking for, but if you present them with what your need is, they might be willing to match it or work with you on it.
I think one of the ways to approach this is for you to sit with Liz and talk through some of your learnings.
Yes.
And it seems to me, one of the things that pops out of this is the master plan.
Definitely.
That we, there may be grants out there for pieces of it. We've got old colony planning, right, doing the kind of master plan overview. But then as we zero in on what do we mean by that? We're talking affordable housing maybe, or we're talking fire, or we're talking police, you know? I think if you two could get together and sort of come up with, also I think because we're such a volunteer town, we need to kind of give guidance to the other committees and commissions. I think if we just ask them, they're going to be kind of, you know, well, what do you mean? You know, I think we need to have some sort of outline for them. But I think this is, excuse me, tremendous opportunity. Going through the information that you supplied, I was just, it never occurred to me that foundations might be an avenue, you know, but it's a no-brainer in a way.
You know, one of the things that this gentleman Frank kept emphasizing was elevator talk, meaning that the town has a lot of needs. And if you just constantly let people know in your walks of life what the needs are, what they're going through, there could be someone out there that's sitting there with a nice talk about that unless they know what your need is, you know, they might just write you a check and say, yeah, I'd love to help you. And he said, you want to?
That's one of the things, if you and Liz could get together, we used to call it in sales a two-minute drill. Same thing as an elevator speech. If you got on an elevator with the CEO of somebody, what would you tell them about the Town of Plimpton?
Exactly.
And you should be able to do it in two minutes or less.
That's actually what jumped out at me. I love your three-page synopsis, but that bullet.
I tried to keep it slow.
That's well-done, well-organized. I've got a lot of information across. But the elevator talk, yeah, what the mission is. But, you know, there's that deeper piece of just getting the word out there. In the nonprofit fundraising world, the axiom is the number-one reason people give. It's not that your mission is good or that you gave a good presentation. The number-one reason people give is they were asked. And that's really what you have under elevator talk. And I think that's the thing that all around town is if all of our departments, commissions are thinking along the way of funding, of not just going to the FinCom, but just kind of always having their eye out there for grants. And then the one other piece, which is back to elevator talk, is of course that need to differentiate ourselves. And that's where, albeit we're a really tiny town, this is pretty exciting, because I think we can make a really cogent case for what a neat, different place we are. And I think you're right on top of that. And that's a really strong bit of elevator talk, that how unique we are. And funders love that stuff. I mean, they get the same old stuff over and over again. Little town of 3,000, duh-duh-duh, all that stuff that's neat about us. There's a nice piece in that.
Well, we need to filter that out to everybody.
Absolutely.
Because many mouthpieces make like work, bringing lots of money one way or the other.
Yep.
Well, we need a list. We need a master list of what our wants are, and...
Yes. Because I, I mean, I could go out there and look, but I don't...
No, I think we got to give you some direction.
Right.
And there are different dollar values of grants, you know. Personally, because I haven't yet done one, I would like to do a couple of small dollar ones, just to go through the whole entire process myself, see, number one, just creating, it doesn't matter if they're looking at $5,000 or a million, you still have a certain components that you have to put together, which is going to be time-consuming. But I'd like to do at least a couple of small ones, and then maybe we can start looking at something that would be larger dollar, that would really help the town. I mean, talking about the police station, that was an opportunity there, that by listening to the class, there was a lot of money out there for that type of construction and things like that.
Well, we're going to need some money next door.
But, right, exactly. But once you've, but once you have voted on a project, you can no longer ask for those funds. It's only for anything with intention to do versus already underway doing.
Okay.
Well, some of the state grants, though, we have, for instance, the efficiency grant. We actually voted the money at town meeting as an article, and then we submitted it to the state for the efficiency grant. And they said, okay. And I think one of the things the Department of Revenue has done is that they've held our hands, us being the towns, they've sort of held our hands, brought us through, because they're trying to professionalize us. They're trying to teach us. So I think there are areas where maybe something like that can be done. I don't know if that's true in the fire and police, but boy, I'd sure like to know.
Yeah, and then the construction.
We know that there's grants that expired, that in hindsight, if we had been better at what we do, we could have got some real money. We know Halifax got a fire truck that cost, what, $750,000, something like that?
Again, if we can put ourselves above everybody else where the grantor wants to say, okay, Plimpton, you made it great. It's, you know, he emphasized, I also recommended that, to get volunteers such as retired schoolteachers in town, because they go through this algorithm. First, you have to send a letter just saying that you want to get the grant, and then they have to approve you. If you don't have that letter exact, I mean, every T crossed and I dotted, then that computer system is going to bump you up, and no human is ever going to see that. So you have to pass the computer-generated algorithms in order to even get to the next step in order to apply for the grant, which is very important.
We need a one-pager. Maybe Liz, you can work on this.
Sure.
Which is all the green community, a list of all the things Plimpton is.
Yes.
Because we are a lot of things. I don't know them all. And that way, we could use it as a foundation.
But it's really good to get a bunch of heads together to do it, because everyone has like their own little concept or their input on it. And if we can get, I don't know whose heads we'd use, but if you could get a group together and just hash it all out...
I think if you two got together, you could lead usums, whoever that is, in a workshop.
We've got some strong grant writers in town, people that we have relied on. You don't have to worry about plagiarism, because it's kind of, different people are applying for grants. John's applied for grants, I've applied for grants, I'm sure Mark has too.
If you have a grant that you want to apply for each year, if you copy and paste what you sent the prior year, they call that plagiarism, even though it's your own grant.
We wouldn't, but maybe some of other departments would, so that would be an important thing to know.
Right. Or if they go out and look at somebody else's grant and say, wow, that sounds really, let's just copy and paste that.
Can't do that either, okay.
Don't do that. Because their readers find all that plagiarism awesome. And if you get caught, kiss your, kiss your grants goodbye.
Might be worthwhile to even form a small committee of grant writers.
You said we have grant writers here in town?
Well, Carolyn Cristofano helped us with the information technology. Tara helped as well, because Tara's applied for many grants too. And we've been pretty successful with grants so far. But we, and we've got retired schoolteachers in town. I'm sure we could put together a small group of people that would be willing to work on grants, because they, it's very time-consuming. But I think once you get all of your facts, your ducks in a row, then it's a little bit easier, because you're just kind of tweaking the information for a particular purpose.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we work on that? Maybe you guys can get together first and get the ball rolling, and then...
Thank you for volunteering. That's great. I mean, we've certainly needed this and the expertise to go along, you know?
Thank you for not quizing me. I was going to come in here and get a quiz, I'm like, oh, Brian.
No.
Well, that'll come later.
I mean, I'm willing to put my time into it, but like I also learned, it takes almost 200 hours to write a federal or down the hill, a state grant. So that's a lot of time that you really have to put in. And if you think you're going to do it any different, then you're probably not going to get the grant. At least that's what they taught us. You know, I'm not saying you might have different experiences, but I have to only go by the expertise.
I don't think we'd put in that kind of...
No, I've never put in that amount of time. Usually, the deadline's like Friday, and it's Thursday night.
And they insist, try to get it in, if they have a deadline of July for us, try to get it in before the 15th of June.
Okay.
Always try to get it in earlier, because you're going to rise to the chart also based on date of receipt.
Yeah, I'd really like to go to a workshop on this, if you guys can pull it together.
Well, you know, many people, there were probably about 50 people in attendance that went with the course. And I talked to quite a few of them, and a lot of them had gone to different free seminars, and they said that this outdid all of them. They said that they learned more in this one class than in this workshop than they did in any others. But if you do see any free ones, I would also attend those if you come across anything.
Well, thank you very much. This is great.
All right, good.
Definitely getting us going in the right direction.
So I will set up some time with you?
Sure, that's fine.
All right. Or you set up time with me.
Okay, so I have your email, so I'll send you a note tomorrow, and we can put something together.
All right. And I'll try to get more of a definitive wish list of what I think that we need to start with.
Perfect.
I'm going to pick your brain for a minute, Elise, change subjects?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. The fire study committee, the fire technical. I know you met Lance Benjamino came in, the fire chief. I know there's a follow-up meeting, not this Wednesday because of town meeting, but the following Wednesday.
Which we're asking you to please attend.
Right. And I guess, what's your headset on where the committee is now, in terms of the, you know, the tasks that you were asked to attack?
Well, I feel that we went through the 50 recommendations, some of them which we feel could be grouped up into a bucket of like training-type thing. I don't know what it actually boiled down to for the number of items, but at this point, we need next-step direction as a committee. We're prioritized by high, medium, and low priority. We went through all of those with Chief Benjamino. He agreed, except for one item. He felt we had it as high, he thought it should be medium, so we all came to an agreement and changed that one. He was, within five hours, I guess his first day being in the fire station, he already recognized many of those recommendations on the list that he feels are absolutely going to be worked on immediately. So he needs to get a little bit of time, his arms wrapped around some of the business aspects of everything. And he wants to then provide us with a timeline, what actions really should be taken for every one of those, and what the timeline is. Because I told him, you know, we have to have definitive timelines. These can't run on forever. And obviously, we want it done yesterday versus tomorrow. So he fully, he fully got that. We would like you to come to the next meeting, because we feel at this point, as a committee, we've done what we can.
Okay.
What I'm going to do is out of those 50 items, I'm going to make a column on my spreadsheet and give you the update of all 50 of those, you know. We already prioritize them by high, low, and medium, but more what actions are going to be taken or have been taken. But the timeline section is not going to be filled in, because that's something that the fire department themselves have to do.
And you got feedback from, I understand, Sean Gunderson?
Yes. Sean and Phil Curran took our original priority list, and they went through every single item. And Sean did an outstanding job. He really had responses to every single one of them. My only concern is, you know, and I let him know this, that this is great, but we need validation for every one of those. You know, if you said that you implemented this, I want to go over to the fire department and you show me what it was like, what changed, and what's now implemented. So that we have true verification, not just, oh, we're going to do this. I want bonded accountability. I want to actually see that everyone whose items have been completed or in action with a timeline assigned to it. So that's my expectation.
Okay, good. Excellent.
That's fantastic. You guys have really gotten...
But us as a committee, we feel like we don't know what to do at this point. I think...
Well, I think wasn't their task was to look at the report and prioritize, and I think you're doing it.
I think at the next meeting, we'll sit down and...
The actions needed can't be done by us.
Right, right.
Although I did offer to Chief Benjamino, if there was any tedious-type work that he felt us as a committee could take on to a system in any way to move some of these through, we'd be glad to take on that as a group. Again, he was just five hours into it.
Sure.
He's got to get his head into everything first. But, you know, we still, that's still on the table. We're still willing to help in any way we can as a committee. Not saying that's really our role and responsibility, but hey, you know, if that's what we can do, that's what we'll do.
Sounds like the dynamics are good in the committee.
Very good. I think the input between the seven members is really outstanding.
Great.
There's a lot of knowledge there. I just, the only thing that I feel is I wish there was another person that was non-fire department-related, because...
Well, if I come, you got it.
They, I sit there, and they talk a jog in that's at times over my head, because I'm not a firefighter. I don't know arachnids and things like that. However, I think I have common sense and business knowledge, which I can imply and use it in that term. But I think if I had another person that was on my side, it'd be, it would be a little better. That would be my only recommendation for the future.
Okay, yeah. Let's think about that.
It's great that they're all fire-related, current and X, but I think having someone with a different aspect, a different perspective also helps.
Great.
When is your next meeting?
The 23rd. It's already been posted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Elise.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I really, I feel very honored that you trusted me to expend the money to send you to this course, and I really hope to help you in the future. And I'll work with Elizabeth to get enough in money.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you, Elise, very much.
Thanks. Good luck.
Enjoy your evening.
Good night. All right. Discuss request to purchase town-owned land at 14 Churchill Road. I think I asked for this on the agenda. So what's the, I mean, we heard some feedback in the email.
So my headset is Colleen Moore, treasurer, needs to come in and talk about her process for how we approach tax land.
Okay.
I like the idea, as I've said before, of going out to auction so that there's no bias. I think in the past years, at times, there was, I'm sure, if you buy your land, we'll sell it to you. I think we need something a little more hands-off.
In fact, I think it's actually required. There is a document, maybe you have it.
Oh, right. This, yeah, this is not it, but I think I do have the document that spells out the process for tax title. I got it.
So I believe it's up to us to make a decision on what goes to auction, right?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
It's, I don't remember what the criteria are on. There may be some options, but most of it is we are required to send out to auction, which actually is good, because we stay out of conflict of interest, favoritism.
But we have a ton of land.
We do.
So we better be clear about what we think we're doing.
Absolutely. And I mean, and there are a bunch of people in town, butters that have been interested in, I mean, including me, who are a butt-town land, that have been interested in buying, and we've never really gotten this together. So I think, I agree. I think we need Colleen in. We need to take a look at that document.
There's another one.
Yeah, that's the one I remember from, from three years ago.
Yeah, we have one from KP Law and this. But, you know, it'd be nice if we had something in there where we took a look at the properties before they go to auction, to see if there's any town value before we do that. And I don't know if we can even do that, you know, if the law allows for that.
Well, we have things like, take the Old Town Bond down on Center Street. There's four acres there. That's pretty nice, two lots that we both, we own both. We must have some purview over how that gets done.
Well, if we, if we, I don't know, actually.
That's town-owned land as versus tax title.
As opposed to taxes, tax title. So town-owned land, we could, right.
So tax title's that specific category.
Okay, tax title, fine. If there's a, you know, goes to auction, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because most of it is, you know, not very good if we paid the taxes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is this a hearing?
No. No hearing. Hi, Howard. I think, as if, what hearing?
Gravel, is that...
No, no. Nope, no hearing.
How are you doing?
No, I agree. And I mean, I think this is a little like the Chapter 61 policy and procedure, is that we just need to get clear on what our policy and procedure is. And this is a great summertime project.
Right. Why don't we have Legal come in and talk to us a little bit? I mean, that's where we got to start.
We could do that.
Would Rich Bowen be someone to bring in for that, and just to get him back into the process a little?
I'm just looking at this, and it says if it's under the $35,000 threshold, the Board of Selectmen may sell that town property to any party that the Selectmen dean...
Right. And that's the threshold that I was thinking of. I mean, higher than that.
So I'm not sure how you value the threshold. You know, like that four acres down.
You need to have an appraisal. That was part of the procurement course that I took, but we just scratched the surface when it came to real property. But you need to have an appraisal done.
But we can't appraisal of every piece we have, I wouldn't think.
No, but if you had a piece of interest, you would appraise it to see where it fell with respect to the threshold.
So like 14 Churchill?
If you were so inclined, yes. I mean, you'd want to, my assumption would be that somebody like Colleen, who deals with this on a regular basis, would be able to provide some level of guidance to say, you know, yes, this is worth pursuing, let's bring in an appraiser and move forward, or no, it's not, depending on...
Should you add that to your bucket list of, you know, talk to Colleen and kind of lead us on how we should approach this?
Yeah, and let's bring in Rich this summer, and maybe we can meet with Colleen and Rich and talk about it.
This would be great, went to Clara. Can we get copies of those documents?
Yeah, it's just a KP Law, yep, absolutely.
There's a piece of land next to me, you know, that the town now owns, who took the taxes. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of land.
I'll email you this one.
Abuts the school, yeah. I'd sure like to know. And it also abuts the conservation land that's out behind.
I'll give you this, but I'll try to email it to you.
That's another 80 acres?
Which is, and exactly what we'd like is contiguous open space.
Right.
Yeah.
Which abuts the Denet School, which abuts our Maple Street, our Churchill Park.
Churchill Park, right.
Which is, yeah, exactly.
I mean, so from Maple Street, you can get all the way down to all the, the end of Upland Road.
You know, which is, which is ultimately, I think, the dream, is putting together a dream way that isn't eating up taxable land, but is...
We own it.
Which is beautiful. Then it's set to go. And obviously, something I would hope we wouldn't sell, ever.
Well, the conservation land's in conservation, so that's ours, taken care of. That's 80 acres. What do you got over in Churchill Park, 110?
130.
130? So we're over 200 acres. We got the Denet School, which is...
That's probably...
40 acres?
I think 35.
35?
Mm-hmm.
We've got a fair piece of land that's contiguous. It's good.
It is. It's great. I'll give you this. I found this online. This was Hanover's Tax Title Policy and Procedure, where they just, they had, the Selectmen had a policy that they spelled it all out. I don't know if that's... I don't know if that's something that we want to think about or not. Yeah, exactly. Unless it's a grant.
And even then, we might...
Let me give it to Bree.
All right, yeah.
She can scan it so that we all have it.
Can you make copies of this one too, Bree, and send that to all of us? Okay, so, so that one is kind of more to come.
I do know that one of the questions that they had talked about on the, that the price, the value had gone.
Okay. All right, update on fire department study committee. So Elise gave us the update on...
The technical.
The technical.
There has not been a meeting since the first one of the open, of the oversight, pending Chief Benjamina's coming in. And really need to talk to him first before, take the next step and see where that goes.
Okay. All right. So next, under that is fire management consultant announcement. And I'll read this. The Town of Plimpton is pleased to announce that Middleborough Fire Chief Lance Benjamina has agreed to act as the town's fire management consultant on a temporary basis. Chief Benjamina will guide us while we look to implement some of the many recommendations contained within the Municipal Resources Incorporated report. As many citizens are aware, the Town of Plimpton has been evaluating its fire EMS operations over the last several months in order to better position the Plimpton Fire Department to provide professional and responsive public service in a fiscally responsible manner. MRI conducted an in-depth study of the town's fire and EMS operations and prepared an extensive report for the town's consideration. The report, along with this presentation they made to the town, are available for viewing on the town's website, HTTPS colon double backslash WWW dot town dot Plimpton dot MA dot US backslash. Since early April 2018, the Town of Plimpton and Halifax have been working together to ensure that Plimpton Fire Department employees are properly trained and also to further explore what potential exists for implementing a shared services model that will, that works effectively for both communities. While serving as the town's temporary fire management consultant, Chief Benjamina will assist the town with implementing some of MRI's recommendations, including streamlining and professionalization of department operations, developing new policies and procedures relative to the fiscal stability of the fire department, and also implementing changes to the fire department's hiring and personnel policies. Chief Benjamina brings a wealth of knowledge to the town, and we are proud to have him on board to guide us during this exploratory timeframe. We would also like to thank the members of the Plimpton Fire Department, who have been cooperating with the town during this transitional period and who continue to provide responsive service, public service to the Plimpton residents. So that's a press release that we had, but nobody is here from the press. But, so, we can email. So we welcome Chief Benjamina, who is, has already jumped in with, with both feet, and I think he's already made some impact next door, and things are...
Very positive.
Very positive, very positive.
Yeah, very exciting. Good man to have on board.
Very good man, I agree. All right, council on, sure. Council on Aging requests to appoint Christine Uniyaki as Old Colony Elder Services Director. I believe this position was held by Pat Mustakeros, and Pat indicated that she was no longer interested in serving in this capacity.
So who is this lady? Is she from in-town or not? She is from in-town?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a volunteer position, right?
Yes. And she met with Pat from what I understand.
Okay. I think it's representing us with Old Colony Planning Council Elder Services, I believe? That's what this is? So she would be our rep to the, they call it AAA, I can't remember what it stands for, but with the seniors with Old Colony Planning Council. Okay, you ready? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, so you're making a motion to appoint Christine Uniyaki as the Old Council, Old Colony Elder Services Board of Director for Plimpton until June 30th, 2019. All right, all second? All in favor? Aye. All right, annual town meeting and special town meeting preparations and motions. Do we have anything from Barbara?
Uh, no, she did edit the motion a little bit for wage and personnel for the classification chart because they added in that deputy fire chief pay range onto it. So she's updated that and given it to Alan Wheelock.
Okay. And then she'll have, she usually has something for us at town meeting, or do we already...
She said she'd bring it to town meeting and hand it out.
She doesn't hand them out before because some people tend to lose them.
Okay, all right. No names mentioned?
Well...
Okay. All right. Do you have a report, Liz?
Sure, let's see here. So the highway superintendent position is still available. The posting is open through May 24th, and so far, we have three applicants, two from outside and one from in-house. So we're still receiving applications for another 10 days.
Do you feel we need to publicize it somewhere further, or...
It's been, so Deb Anderson was putting it in both of her papers for the last few weeks, so it's been in there. It was on Facebook, it's on the town's website, and it's also on MMA, and then it's posted at the Highway Department here at the Town House. So anything else that we can do to get word out? We can do another Facebook post and see if maybe different people see it. It looks like it was shared several times, though, so I'm guessing that it made it to Plimpton Helping Plimpton and some different, different entities. So so far, we have the three applications.
Disappointed we don't have more.
Well, there's still 10 days.
Yeah.
There's still 10 days. I was a little surprised. I thought we'd get a little more interest sort of right out of the gates, but there's still 10 days left, so we'll continue.
You know, we could always announce at a town meeting, too.
You know, that's what I was wondering about, is where, as a report at the beginning?
Sure, right at the beginning.
Yeah. That'd be, do we have any other? By then, there won't be other openings.
No.
Yeah, mentioning a town meeting makes huge sense.
Well, and do we have the animal control that we're going to be looking for as well?
So those, any responses for that posting are due back by, by the end of the day today.
Okay, so it's too late for that one?
And so we have two applicants for that position, so I'll be forwarding both of those to the full board. I met with one of the people, and then the other individual who applied, I've also met with her briefly, and I think that both people are very good candidates, so we'll be forwarding both of those to the full board.
Do you want to do that, Christine, or would we have Liz do it at town meeting, announce that position?
Probably us, because I think you're going to be sitting...
I'm not a resident.
Are you going to be sitting at the table or in the audience?
I think I was in the front row in the audience.
Okay.
We're going, when Brian, you know, announces who can speak and asks for different people, you'll be one of them.
Right.
So she can speak by that time if you want, it's up to you.
It's up to you, whatever you're, whatever you're comfortable with.
We can figure it out, yeah, okay.
If, if anybody else wants to announce it, I can draft something brief for you to say, and it'll just be directing them to the town's website where we have the job description and everything that they need to do.
Okay. All right, perfect, we'll figure it out.
Okay. So the animal control position, that was part of my update, just that it expires this evening, and so far, two applicants. For Old Colony Planning Council, I think that they're hoping to get some feedback on those comprehensive permit regulations, maybe within the next week or so. They were aware that we have town meeting coming up and everything, so I can resend the document to everyone, just so you have it.
Perfect.
And we can, we can go from there. If we need more time, we can certainly have it. I was just looking to update Lisa with something, at the very least. Then for correspondence, we have a few things here. We have an email from the Board of Health regarding tainted water in the Prospect Road area, and also detailing the 1980 agreement between the towns of Plimpton and Middleborough. And it looks like this, I believe this was sent out to everybody, I think Bree sent it along, and...
So it wasn't clear to me how, if you can help me, Mike, the Middleborough Transfer Station dump, whatever, how far down the street will they, will Middleborough allow us to tie into their water?
And I, I don't have any idea on that, but the sort of working group that's looking at the Atwood property, this is an important piece of that.
Sure, absolutely.
And so we're exploring that.
Okay, okay.
I don't have any answers yet. It is one more challenging wrinkle in this, because obviously, if the well water weren't any good, the value of the lots, the potential lots, changes considerably. So it doesn't make our life any easier, and we're, we're looking into it.
You would think that if there was an issue with the water there, though, that they wouldn't be able to sell the cranberries.
You know, it's, I, well, I, I won't, yeah, I, it just, the whole thing's challenging. It just makes valuing the property, both the lots in front and the whole property, much, much more challenging.
Well, don't they have to, don't we have monitor wells around there on the Plimpton side?
I don't know. I don't know any of that.
I don't know either.
We got that late last week, and it, I mean, I'll admit, it kind of put a little bit of a wrench in, into our thinking and way that we might structure a deal if we were to exercise our right of first refusal.
Okay.
It's just one more layer, as always.
We also have a letter here from the Plimpton Fire Department requesting the following two items to be declared surplus, a water buffalo and a Bauer air compressor.
Water buffalo?
That's a good question. I was hoping you wouldn't ask. So I would recommend for this that we declare the items as surplus, but maybe we want to do it with the contingency, that we just forward this to Chief Benjamina first, just to give it a final overview. I don't want anything to conflict with any plans that he may have had.
Why don't we just send it to him first? I mean...
Yeah, let's send it to him first.
Okay. We have an invitation here from the Plymouth County Development Council to attend a forum on Friday, June 8th. It looks like presentations from various people from within the county, and it has a little bit to do with tourism and visitors, so...
Is it signed by?
It's not signed. It's, but it does come from the Plymouth County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, that's Paul Cripps. Could I see that after?
Yeah, absolutely. I know you had mentioned maybe connecting with him for some tourism type initiatives. I'm not sure if that's, would be as informative as some of their other things, but we could certainly look at it.
We can talk about this after, off the line.
Okay, so there's that. We have a letter from Joy Marble notifying us that Jackie Freitas is now the volunteer driver, and Cheryl Brown is no longer the volunteer driver. So that's fine. I think going forward, we may want to, not to overcomplicate anything, certainly, but I think we do need to take a look at what's going on with drivers for some of these different things, and if they're doing it on a volunteer basis, are they using, like, say in her case, is she going to be using their van? Like, do we have volunteers who aren't on the town's records, like, operating town vehicles, or if they're using their own vehicles? Are there any kind of, like, liability issues or things like that that we may need to address so that they don't encounter a problem with, say, their own car insurance or whatever the case may be? I think that's worth pursuing, at least at a, at a slow pace, but I think it's something that over time, we might want to wrap our, our arms around a little bit.
Old Colony has a, has drivers that they pay to, to do this. So I'm not sure if this is something that Joy is pursuing, is utilizing their program...
See, that's what we need to establish, I think, because, I don't know, I just, I'd hate to see somebody who's kind enough to volunteer to use their personal vehicle and their time to bring, bring people somewhere, and then, I don't know, if somebody was injured getting in and out of their personal vehicle, or, or something to that effect, and meanwhile, it's not a town employee and/or it's not a town vehicle, I would just have some questions about that, that I think over time, not to overcomplicate anything, certainly, in the immediate future, but I think going forward, that's something that we want to make sure we have our ducks in a row. I even received some, some questions from the Council on Aging not that long ago about, would the town cover a AAA membership if they had to use their personal vehicle and different things like that? So I think it's a subject that is going to keep coming up again and again, so it might not hurt to at least get some...
Do you want to reach out to Old Colony Planning Council?
Yeah, I'll do that, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, I think that's a, yeah, great idea. And I, I can't remember the director's name, but I'm sure you can find it.
I can contact them and figure that out. I'm, I'm not looking to open a can of worms, certainly, but I also, I don't want anybody to be in a bad position, including the town.
Well, if there's money available, I mean, I sign the checks, so I see people's names all over the place.
Right. And then maybe that's just better, then there's a record of them as a driver and...
And maybe there's some type of blanket insurance that these people are covered under by being employed by Old Colony Planning Council as a volunteer driver.
Right, I'm assuming.
So let's, let's check it out.
Jackie was on there as the part-time.
Okay, because this says volunteer.
Right, but as the part-time volunteer, so Cheryl was the first volunteer, and Cheryl designed, and now Jackie's going to do it all the time. I do think she takes the van when she does this, that Cheryl used to come in and take the van and take them to an appointment or whatever it was.
All right. We'll just make sure that we're all set with that, because Jim had some questions about AAA and a few other things, so we'll try to get everything answered.
The car ever had to get towed, fault, and of course, but he didn't think that there was a spare.
Right.
So I climbed underneath it.
A spare tire?
It was a spare tire. So I showed him where the spare tire was.
Thank you.
The brief tonight should be for Bree and finding the spare tire.
Oh, I have a spare tire to be carrying around all day.
I'm not going there.
We have, we have an application here from the Plimpton Garden Club for use of the town green on May 19th, and it appears that they do need this signed, and Pat Dillon has already signed off on it, so I'll pass that down for...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Plimpton Garden Club to use the town green on 5/19, this Saturday, from 7:00 AM until they're finished. And this is for the, their annual plant sale, Plant and Green Elephant. I saw the ad, that was so cute, plant sale and good green elephant.
Green elephant, something related to the water buffalo?
I think the water buffalo may be for sale at the Green Elephant. All right, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
I made the motion, and John seconded.
And then while you're signing that, just to finish off correspondence, we received notification from St. John Newman Parish, which is in East Free Town, about their Memorial Day weekend Lakeside Festival of Events. And then Plimpton Halifax Express, there were some lovely pictures from the Soul Homestead Education Center just over the line in Middleborough. They had a family-friendly annual Sheep Day event, and there were also more Tales of Old Plimpton.
And Miss Massachusetts Agriculture was there.
Oh, really?
Yes, there's a picture of her.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that one.
No, I just thought that was really interesting. Yeah, she's a farmer, she had a banner, it said, Miss Massachusetts Agriculture or something. It was cute.
Maybe we should have a Miss Plimpton.
All right, so that's all the correspondence?
That's all, that's a wrap.
All right, anything else?
No.
All right. Dates to Remember, we've got town meeting Saturday, I'm sorry, Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Denet, and then the annual elections will be the following Saturday. And what time are they open? Is it 7 to 8, or, do you know what time the polls are open?
Say, I remember seeing something about 8:00 AM.
I think, didn't we change it till 6:00 PM?
Eight to six?
I know they start at eight.
Okay. Okay.
I think it might be here.
I'm not sure.
Hold on.
It probably is there.
8 o'clock AM until 6 o'clock PM.
Okay, so you can vote at, uh, and the voting is here, open at 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM. So, the next selectman's meeting will be the 21st, and, uh, we will be having a brief executive session at 5:30 and should be ready for open session at 6:00 PM. Board's Goals for Coming Year, Economic Development, I don't think we've got anything new to report on that one. Financial Management, just that where we've been thrifty, as, as always, and, um, Town Meeting will have a conservative budget to be voting. Public Safety.
Uh, um, I take a look anytime.
Yeah.
It's, uh, land is cleared, stakes are in the ground, moving forward.
I think, uh, on the fire side, we've talked about, there's a lot of things going on, public safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Oh, true, right. All right, Grants, we had Elise in to talk to us about a workshop she attended, which is very exciting. Volunteerism, um, we've, once again, just thanking all of our volunteers. We've got a great group of people that step up. Elise went to the, the grant workshop because she wants to help us apply for grants and be more productive with our grants. So, um, her, everybody that serves on all the numerous committees that we have, they make the town work. And without you, we would be in really tough shape. So, thank you all for your countless hours that you volunteer with the town. Technology, anything?
I think it's something that we're gonna have to, after town meeting, we have to put more focus on. So, Liz and I will
Work on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Minutes, we'll hold those. And do you think we might have those before town meeting, Bree?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can vote those at town meeting. So, we've got open session from 4:30, but we did have the executive session.
Yep.
Um, I thought those looked fine. Did you have any?
I did find one little typo that I'll fix.
Okay, did you?
I was finally here.
All right. So, I'll make a motion. We accept the executive session minutes from 5:00 to as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Rants and Raves, to close things up. Who wants to go first? Do you wanna go first, John, or Liz goes first?
Yeah, I do. Um, sure, glad to. Um, Town Meeting Wednesday, this is a rave. Um, pure democracy in action, an ancient form of, uh, government. Uh, Town Meeting's really the execu, or the legislative branch of government, and, uh, um, love to have a lot of people come out and, uh, and participate and appreciate, uh, the way we go about things.
I'll follow along with that and say, um, my rave is, um, Liz, the great job she did with the warrant and actually getting it out in a timely manner, so our residents have a, have plenty of time to read it and adjust the information in preparation for town meeting. So, thank you, Liz.
Yeah.
Great job on that.
Knowing how we've done it in the past, that really was something.
Yeah.
I guess my rave is, uh, for Chief Benjamino coming in and, uh, instantly providing direction, sort of, I think, gathering people. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how this plays out.
Here, here. All right. Anything else? All right. So, I'll make a
I have something.
All right.
The Council on Aging's event that they did.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. That they had a really nice event, um, for Mother's Day, and I think there was kind of a hiccup with it, that, um, somehow, there was notice, uh, that was circulated that it was canceled. So, there was some confusion about whether or not the event was gonna take place, and that, um, in the future, I would just, um, caution people to make sure that, uh, your, if, um, an event or a meeting is canceled, there will definitely be some official notification on the town's website or Facebook so that, um, everyone would be informed. But, thank you. They did a great job with, um, the Mother's Day.
That was cute.
Excellent. Okay. All right. So, I'll make a motion that, um, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night. We'll see you all at town meeting.
Good night.
We off, John?